I'd like to call this Greenville County Council Committee, the whole meeting, to order, and we will start with the invocation. Counselor Shaw, if you'd do the honors.
Sure. Our Father in Heaven, thank you for this time together. Thank you for all that you do for us, and pray for your guidance and your mercies on us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you.
Amen.
Next, we have the approval of minutes for both April 14th and April 15th.
Mission to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the 2025 TAP Grant West Greenville Shared Use Path. Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of the 2025 TAP Grant West Greenville Shared Use Path as presented in the packet.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. And next up, the feature presentation. Mr. Cannell is going to bring us our budget presentation.
Name an address. Try to get close so people can hear behind. I would like to start by taking here.
I'll just check in with my sound person on the front row.
Okay. Well, I'm pleased to present Greenville County's budgets for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. The document provides a financial structure for Greenville County's programs and services and encompasses a fiscally responsible allocation plan for resources and services necessary to maintain our county's acclaimed quality of life. The budgets allow for a continuation of the sound management and financial practices Greenville County government has established and maintained over the years, which have resulted in the county's retention of our triple AAA bond ratings for the past 22 years. If I can find the keyboard. This budget proposal does meet organizational priorities. Public safety, support public safety functions of emergency medical services, detention center, and sheriff's office. Fiscal responsibility maintains our triple A bond ratings, provides for long-term fiscal viability and fiscal management of fund balances, reserves through operating efficiencies, cost savings, and revenue enhancement. Infrastructure, provide for county infrastructure that gives mobility and access for diverse community. Economic development, promote long-term financial stability and provide a livable community for citizens. Strategic growth and land management, balance the future needs of the county with the preservation of green space. Our major emphasis of this budget, it does maintain an average fund balance of $68.7 million in the general fund, reduces total county millage by 1.5 mils, reflects organizational priorities of public safety, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, economic development, and strategic growth, provides for a cost of living increase for our employees. So what we do to prepare the budget? Well, we've inventoried all our services and all department budgets, were reviewed in an effort to reduce unnecessary expenses, realign resources where needed. We reviewed all funds. We minimize the increase in general fund operating accounts. As you know, most of the funds for the county flow through the general fund, so obviously that's where our major focus always is. The proposed budget for the two fiscal years of '26 and fiscal year '27, for fiscal year '26 amounts to $488,483,000. For fiscal year 2027, $495,738,000. Now, this includes general funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, and enterprise funds. In the amount above, it does not include the internal service funds. They are $56.9 million the first year, $58.8 million. And the reason for that is it would be double counting because we account for those up above. These are internal service funds such as health insurance. So we basically charge all the departments up above, and it goes to these internal service funds. They're accounted for separately, but in order to keep from inflating the number. We show them everywhere. Everything's budgeted. But what I'm saying is, just so you know, so there's no confusion. And this shows the proposed budget summarized by fund. We have our general fund, of course, is the lion's share of it, and then our enterprise funds, special revenue funds, and lastly, our debt service funds. So what did we highlight in the proposed budget? It's focused on public safety and law enforcement, reduction in taxes, major investment in infrastructure, intentional focus on maintaining sound fiscal condition, and $2 million each year to address a major need of radio replacement. So what are the highlights for public safety? The positions we've added this year or proposed in the proposed budget are strictly public safety. We have 12 deputies each of the next two years. We have two deputy coroners each of the next two years. Five paramedics each of the next two years. And then forensics and a criminologist, record specialist in records, probate court, one law clerk, and in emergency management, a preparedness manager. I think everybody can probably attest to the need for the preparedness manager after the two disasters we've had in the last six months, and so we're looking to help them out a little bit. We do have a huge need for the body worn cameras and in-car cameras for the sheriff's office. That's a multi-year project. It'd be over 10 years. We'd purchase radios or cameras. And then other operating equipment for the sheriff. As you add a deputy, you have to add the equipment that the deputy uses. Operational funding for the coroner's office for auto expenses and telephone services. Increase funding for emergency management for the response team and increase contract costs. Increase funding for forensics, equipment contract costs. Funding for courthouse judicial office expansion and security upgrades. Personal service funding for public defender's office. What are the highlights of fiscal responsibility? It maintains our adequate reserves and meets standards to maintain the triple AAA bond rating. I keep calling it triple AAA because it's from all three rating agencies. There's only a few of us in the country that possess this, and we do want to maintain that. 3% salary adjustment for both fiscal year 2027 and then fiscal year '26 and fiscal year 2027. We do have funds in the budget for the vehicle and equipment replacements and additions for both fiscal year '26 and '27. Keep in mind, when you add officers, you need the resources for the officers. Grant matching funds of $200,000 per year. What are the highlights of the planning and infrastructure improvements? Well, neighborhood drainage projects, which I think everybody can attest to the need for that, where whenever we have issues within specific areas, people that are affecting people, we have funds set aside to provide some of the funding to fix that. Water quality retrofit projects. We have an annual investment of $2.5 to $4 million. Stormwater flood projects, which has been hugely successful for us over the last number of years of $2.35 million. And something that we're very happy to report, we have a $40 million amount budgeted for road improvements for each of the next two fiscal years. And then radio replacement of $2 million per year each of the next two years. What do we have in the capital projects and economic development? Well, we have $25.45 million set aside in the first year, and then $18.2 million set aside in the second year. And this is for capital projects to support IT, to basically help with the parks and recreation projects, facility improvements. And it's all listed out. You'll see it all listed. I don't want to detail it all out for you when you can read it and study it yourself. Equipment replacement. There are a number of issues in radio replacements, camera replacements, things like that that need to be funded, and they're included in here. $3.1 million for fiscal year 2026 and fiscal year 2027 for economic development funding. And here are some of the capital projects included in the budgets. Technological improvements. We have enhancements to the operating systems and GIS photography. We got historical document preservation for the register of deeds. And there again, there's a replacement of body worn cameras and in-car cameras for the sheriff's office. We also have the, in the tax office assessment office, we have the final payment of the software upgrade that we just finished up that will be included in here. Facility construction projects, flooring replacements across a number of facilities. We have a cooling tire to rebuild at the courthouse and law enforcement center, replacement of roof at animal care. Got to keep the pets dry. And central records facility and traveler's rest maintenance facility. We have expansion of courthouse, judicial offices, and security upgrades. For those of you that don't know, whenever a circuit judge is promoted to an appeals court judge or a supreme court judge, the county from which they came has to still provide housing for them, office space for them. Well, we've been so successful in Greenville, where we have one appeals court judge now, we have four supreme court justices from here. So that's put a strain on us where we have to provide some office space for them. And we've been in contact with our representatives now at the state, and they have been very gracious to say that they will help. So we'll see what happens in their budget. But we do have funds set aside for that so that we can provide some office space for these individuals at the courthouse. And that leads us to a bigger conversation hopefully we can have as we go through this process. What are we going to do with the courthouse in the future? They're about out of space all the way around. Any of you that have been over there will see that they're very, very much packed in. And we moved people around. They moved people over to family court over in Halton Road, which has helped. But there's still a need. So we are going to be starting a study group with the solicitor, public defender, clerk of court, some of the judges, just to sit down and kind of identify what the needs are. And then come back to county council and share with you some of those ideas. And then if there's a will to move forward with some improvements, it'll be a long-range type plan that we need to address. And we do have some, always have the equipment projects included in the budget. Vehicle replacements and additions, like I said, as you add people, they don't necessarily get a new car, but we have to add some vehicles to make up for the additional individuals coming onboard. We have some stretchers for EMS to replace in the life. We also have a number of ambulances that we need to replace, and those are a very expensive proposition when we start doing that. Radios for the public safety offices. These are the handhelds, the vehicle radios. They're going to be obsolete in a matter of years, about two years. So we'll upgrade them now and then pay for them over about five years. That will carry us through to the next upgrade. It just seems like some of the providers actually have planned obsolescence so that the equipment doesn't last too long. And so they do the upgrades, and you have to upgrade or you can't use them. Parks and Rec, Mr. Lambrecht has done a tremendous job positioning Parks and Recreation Fund. It's in good financial shape, and there's a lot we can do out there. We got a lot of paving roads, parking lots, sidewalks at Southside and Northside Park, tennis and pickleball court lighting at Southside, Northside, and Lakeside Park, replacement of playground equipment at Pittman Park, trail extensions, that is huge, and turf for soccer field at Hurst Clock. And we've been looking at some of the staffing and whatnot at the recreation, and we're probably going to be able to eliminate about seven or eight positions, which we did not so long ago also, and contract out some of those services. It's getting very difficult to hire and retain some of the turf management type individuals. So we can contract out, save some money there. We've taken on a couple other kind of unique programs where they actually have robots now that will stripe soccer fields and football fields and things like that. So we have two of those. And just think how many man irs are saved trying to lay out the stripes and just think how straight they'll probably be. It's been wildly successful because you can, basically you can change the field overnight if you wanted to. And all you got to do is have one person making sure that it retains paint, has paint in the tank, and it holds like five gallons or something like that. So it goes for quite a while. So you're saving paint because it's much more efficient, but you're also saving in the personnel costs. So we're always striving to do what we can to, you know, keep the costs from going up while still providing the service that people demand. And then, of course, infrastructure projects. We have a number of them within the stormwater fund. And we also have, of course, very happy to recommend that we increase the road paving or road repair budget to $40 million. And that's $40 million just for that aspect of it. We also have another $2 point some odd million set aside to pay the bonds for the Woodruff Road bypass that was funded years ago, and then some capital costs that also. But this would actually be 40 for that specific use. And that would be up to county council how you want to allocate that. Do you want to use it all for paving, or would you rather break it up for different projects? It's totally up to county council. But that's $40 million per year. General fund revenues, there again, we are projecting a strong, strong year coming in. We do have reassessment coming up, but let's be very, very clear about that. Reassessment does not generate additional revenue for the county. It does not. Just people say it does. Well, it's reassessment year, the values go up. When the values go up, the taxes go down. The millage rate goes down. We've been through it many times. Every five years, we go through it, and we can show you that we don't benefit from reassessment. Now, individual tax bills can change. Mr. Trips may go up, mine may go down, or vice versa. That's just the way it works. When you take the global number of properties in the county and make adjustments, some go up more than others. Keep in mind, we're capped at 15%. The most any property can go up is 15%. What you'll find in Greenville County, most of them will probably go up 15%, which is great. Then basically, relationship stays the same. But some will not go up quite as much and all that. But just for the record, we do not get additional revenue from reassessment. So our millage rate will actually go down after reassessment is done. But we do have growth in the county, anywhere from 3% to 5%. So we will see some increase there, activity in different offices. You'll see more activity, marriage licenses, different filings, building permit fees, things like that. So we are projecting a good increase. We did adjust property taxes in general fund. We moved some millage to general fund also. So it's, there are a lot of different factors that went into play to make it all work because we reduced 1.5 mils. So it came from different General fund expenditures, there again, you'll see the main increases, salaries and benefits. That's adding people, and that's 3% increase there. Some operating expenses, contractual agreements. You know, when you look at the big picture there, almost 80% of our budget is people, people and benefits. Health insurance. We got a 20% increase in health insurance this year. Hopefully, that will cover it. Health insurance has been miserable for the last number of years, ever since COVID. It has not, not just the claims, but the drug cost have gone through the roof. And we've tried a number of techniques to stabilize those, haven't been real successful yet. So we're looking at some other options, and we'll continue to do that. But it's a real challenge. We do self-insure, so we're not quite as susceptible to some of the whims of some of the big insurance companies. But the cost of the claims is what has really hit us hard, both medical and the prescription This shows you in a quick slide, the fund balance. We're keeping right at the $70 million mark, which falls well within the 25% to 35% fiscal, financial policy requirement. So we're staying right in the middle of that. As, you know, expenditures increase, we'll have to keep raising that up a little bit to go. But we feel very comfortable where we're proposing we end up. Hopefully, it'll come in a little stronger. But we've been very successful over the years keeping it where it needed to be. Enterprise fund, that includes solid waste and stormwater management. And we do have $33 million set aside for the first year and 30, right at $34 million on year two. Internal service fund, there again, we talked about that a minute ago, but $56.9 million the first year and $58.8 million the second year. This mainly our health and dental fund, workers comp, fleet management and building services, small amount for the building services. But the two big ones are health and fleet. So how does the budget proceed? We have first reading for fiscal year '26 on May 20th. We also have first reading for fiscal year '27 on May 20th. Then we'll have some workshops probably before that May 20th date, actually. And then second reading would occur on June 3rd for fiscal year '26 and June 3rd for fiscal year '27. More budget workshops as needed. And then third reading would be June 17th for fiscal year '26. And then July 15th would be third reading, unless that changes, for fiscal year '27. So in summary, the budget does meet requirements to main triple A ratings. It does address the organizational priorities and goals. It does reduce millage by 1.5 mils, increase personnel and public safety area. It does address capital needs, and it does provide for economic development progress. And with that, I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions that you may have. But I would request that as you go through the books, you'll all get the nice little binder tonight to go through it. Please send your questions to us in writing if you can so that we can make sure we provide you the complete answer. You know, I can answer probably 99.9% of your questions, but I like to be precise when we come to budget because we're making some big decisions here. And it's a very good budget, I feel. I do want to thank our budget staff, Ruth Barris, Denise Granion, Lisa Shealy, and Maria Thule. They have worked very hard. As we've changed numbers, they think they got it all ready to go. And then I call, I got one more number to change. And so there's a lot of that going on, and they've just done it with a smile and have produced a very, very good document and made sure all the numbers tick and tie together very nicely. So once you get your questions though, they'll help us make sure we get them all answered and completely answered for you. But I can answer any, if you have anything right now, I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, for the presentation. And I just wanted to go ahead and state, too, that I think that the next step would be good to go ahead and set a future workshop soon for the budget just to get started, and then we can have another one as we need. So I'm going to look at trying to do that even early next week. I think I'd talk to the clerk about that, and that way we'll have the rest of the week and the weekend to look it over and have any initial questions, and we can go from there. But I'll open it up for any comments or questions for the administrator.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Mr. Cannell, appreciate the additional staffing in the public safety area. Just curious if any other departments, from a staffing perspective, were there other requests made? Are there any areas where we might be a little bit understaffed? Appreciate, again, I mean, public safety is definitely a priority, but I'm wondering our thoughts on that. And then my second question, once we get through fiscal year '27, I feel like we've been talking about the radios and we've been doing them all along. Are we going to be at a place where they're all going to be upgraded, or do we feel like that cycle is going to start over again in fiscal '28?
We did some radios back, I believe it was 2018, something like that, and got everybody kind of up to speed. We did a whole new system, quite frankly. We joined the state system. We put up towers. We did all that. That was probably about six, seven years ago. And everything was great until we got notice that Motorola is upgrading the system to another system. And these radios, some of them can be basically upgraded with a software upgrade and all that, which will happen. But there's a number of them that can't be upgraded. So it's planned obsolescence, and it forces you to buy. We're looking at some other options besides Motorola. We'll see what we can attain. It's going to be pretty much rolling. That we'll have to continue to purchase radios as we go. It's kind of like cell phones where they keep changing them, and if you want a faster one or more efficient one. The key with public safety is interoperability. Make sure they can talk to each other. If you got some on one system and some on another, you're in trouble. And we've seen that with our, the disasters we've had, everybody's been on the same wavelength and been able to communicate, and it's gone exceptionally well. You know, we recovered from the hurricane very fast, and I'm talking about the immediate recovery. And then the fire, that was quite an undertaking there, and it worked very well. But everybody was communicating, talking with each other. So the radios, that's probably going to be a 10-year process. We'll get them all now, but we'll pay for them over 10 years. And the beauty about that is you get one or two or three replacements during that time as they upgrade. So the problem we're running into in both of these areas, public safety, there's not that many providers. So we're very limited on where we go. And the good ones know they're the good ones, so they command the prices. But we are trying to work it out as we go. The other thing about the employees, we are the largest county in the state. Y'all have heard me say this many, many times. We are the largest county in the state. So you would anticipate that we probably have a number of employees per capita that are going to be probably at the highest, higher level, like Charleston, Richland, other counties that are almost our size, not quite. We're the second lowest. There's one county lower than us. Now, there's a couple of us tied per capita. So we always have needs for staff, but we try to find a way to do it without adding people. For instance, you heard me talk about robots at the Parks and Rec. That takes probably two people that we don't need, you know, because it takes two people to stripe fields and maintain fields and things like that. So we've tried to do it with technology, and we've just held the line on people where we could. Unfortunately, you can't do that for public safety. You've got to have people. You gotta have people. Can't have robots driving the ambulances yet or answering police calls yet. But, so that's where our focus has been is, and it's been that way for quite a few years now. So I think we're starting to see the, the success with that. If you notice though, detention, they did not ask for people this year because they are getting their positions filled and they're able to maintain that. Even though our population is highest it's ever been, they're able to do it with the people they have, which is good. And also, we're not going to be staffing the juvenile detention facility. Because if you recall, we are actually leasing that to the state now and so they will be handling that and they pay us. Now, you will see in the budget, an increase of about 750,000 for food for the inmates because of the increased food costs, but the, the lease for the juvenile facility almost covers that. So that's kind of a wash, turned out pretty good. But we can always use more people. We try to work smarter and more efficiently with what we got and I think we've succeeded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tripp.
Appreciate your prioritization of public safety, Mr. Administrator. You've got $40 million over two years for roads. You returned 1.5 mills. What areas were cut in the budget?
All right. Well, the 40 million actually is a real allocation of the FLO funds that we receive. Currently, the county keeps 30%. The budget proposes keeping 60%. And that would give us the increase needed, also taking out, for instance, the bond payment for the Woodruff Road Bypass out of the, out of those funds and paying for them separately. Out of road maintenance fees still, but, but basically increasing it to 40 million. So that, that's one part of it. We did reduce the amount for affordable housing from 3 million to 1 million. Now, keep in mind, the 1 million is what started the program way back when. That was the money we received from PRISMA as part of a settlement when the hospital expanded and all that. It goes on for 32 years. I think we're in about year eight of that. And so there's quite a few years left on that. So we wanted to keep some funds for affordable housing from a program that has been long established. We did reduce the, the money set aside for the land preservation from 2 million to 1 And there again, that was a millage that went to that and we're moving millage around and cutting back, something had to give. Those are the two major changes right there, but it mainly is FLO money, quite frankly, that was, that allowed us to do a lot of this.
Can I ask a follow-up? So who, so where was that other 30% going out of the FLO money?
It goes to the other taxing jurisdictions.
So are they aware that they're no longer going to get that money?
Not yet. No, I wanted to share it with y'all first.
Counselor Shaw.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I did have a question about, can you give an idea of, since the healthcare cost is so much, what percentage healthcare is of the total budget? Is, do you have that number?
I do. If I can get to it. Right here, I can get it to it off my slide actually.
No hurry.
Yeah. No, I've got it right in front of me here. It is roughly, total budget, that's about 10%.
50%?
10%.
Oh, 10, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay. And just to, I remember roughly last, the current budget maybe is 380 million. Is that, is that about accurate to this year or so?
Yeah, it's, it's somewhere in that neighborhood. I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay. So I, yeah, I'm just rough numbers, but if we went up to this, it would be 488.
Yeah. And let me, let me explain that to.
Yeah, please.
There again, it's, when you're dealing with fund accounting, you gotta keep in mind, you're dealing with separate, separate entities, so to speak. So like when we do some, an infrastructure bank where the FLO money occurs, so we increase it. And I, and these numbers, I'm just going to, for, use for examples, they're not exactly what we have in here. But say we increase it 30 million, we bring in 30 million more, okay? That's an infrastructure bank here. And then we transfer that to road program, okay? So you have 30 million revenue increase, 30 million expenditure increase. Now over in road fund, you got 30 million coming in as a transfer and you got 30 million being spent on roads, okay? So now there's another 30 on revenue, another 30 on expenditures. So that one transaction, that one 30 million dollar increase created 60 million on revenue side and expenditure side, okay? So some of that has occurred and that's, that's why. And it's all in here. It's no magic, no smoke and mirrors, but it's just proper accounting for it. Another thing you'll see in here too is the land sales are beginning for the property here. We got 1.6 acres under contract right now for 8.8 million dollars. So we're showing that in here with an estimate of another 30 million. So of course that's going to inflate the budget. So different things like that have occurred that are in here and they're very easy to explain. So, you know, you can't, you can't keep a budget just if you bring on a new project, you can't just keep it flat without it jumping. The thing to do is look from one year to the second year because now it's stabilized, okay? It's already, it's the one big jump occurred the first year. So look at the first year versus the second year and it's very flat. So, because you're not getting those big variations.
Because just that number roughly would be an 8% increase, but you're saying there's, we shouldn't look at it that way?
No, because it's inflated and it's inflated because of fund accounting is why it's inflated.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's properly classified and shown, but it just hews, hews the numbers. So when you go through here, for instance, the total county budget is projected to increase 22% the first year, 1.49% the second year. That's when I talked about it being flat. So it, it, it takes out that big variation. And you can do that too if you want to sit down and back things out, but it, anytime you take on or you change kind of the scope of what you're doing and going from a road program that basically we're spending anywhere from 8 to 16 million a year to 40 million, that's a big change.
Okay. And I think you addressed two of these, Historic Trust and Affordable Housing. Was there any adjustment to Green Link, the bus, bus system?
I have not proposed any adjustment there. They, they did ask for a number or quite a few more funds, but we did not really provide any, any additional funds out there to those type agencies. So I'm not recommending an increase.
No increase, but that means we would stay at the level from the last two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And, oh, just for instance, this, the emergency, the director we had of the emergency management, she did a great job. Are you saying there's a different position between that director and a preparedness manager? Is that a new, you said that was a new position?
Additional position. That's a new position.
What do they do different?
They do some of the long-range planning for disasters to help out. They're, you know, they've got a very small staff over there as we all saw when we were all over there and, yeah, they, they just need bodies. The problem you have with any type of disaster that, that we had, unfortunately had two of them, we just wear the people down because it's 24/7. I mean, they're there round the clock for extended periods. The hurricane was very hard on our staff there. We lost some people because of that, quite frankly. It just wore them out. And so we want to have, make sure we have some bodies that can help them put things in place while there's no disaster going on so that it will help them when a disaster may occur.
Just one more question about the, the Historic Trust. Is it my understanding that there's, there has to be money unspent in that trust? I mean, I don't think they could find enough conservation easements to exhaust their current funds. What happens to the money that is in there? Do you have an idea how much money that is and what happens to that money?
Yes. It, right now, it's going to be somewhere just shy of $2 million. That remains in the fund. It stays with them and they can spend it if they acquire or find some property to acquire. Of course, they have to bring that to county council, but yeah, they have access to that money. And that's why we felt that we could back off a little bit on the funding and still, they'll still be in fairly good shape that way.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Again.
Sorry, just one more, not a question, but just, Mr. Mitchell and I attended the auditor's presentation yesterday regarding reassessment. If you haven't, I'm sure you maybe have all seen it, but it really, he does a great job of really explaining how the county does not make money on reassessment. So definitely recommend that you watch that presentation, but also I know he's open to going if you've got groups that you think would benefit from that. I think the more that we can get him on the road helping to tell that story, it'll be helpful as we go through this process.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Cornell? I want to thank you for your presentation and you know me, I'm going to have some questions. But since some of my questions may be answered after I review the budget that you present to us, I'd just like to let you know I'll reserve mine until later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I just had a question about, this is out of absolute ignorance, but did we increase any type of fees in different departments and were we able to, was that helpful?
Oh, yeah. Well, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we really hit the fees hard to get them up to where they need to be. And we're making adjustments now in building permit fees again to keep them current, landfill fees, keep them current, I believe it's 10, 12, something like that percent. And that's what we're trying to do so we don't slide behind. And all those little pieces help us as we move forward. And that's what helped us with the one and a half mil decrease, which is huge to be able to do that right now. The actual projected Natural Resources Fund pro forma shows me 2.6 million at the end of the current fiscal year. So going into the new year, they'll be in pretty good shape. And then they'd still have between 1.8 and 2 million in the next two years. So they'll have, plus the million addition for them. So it should be, okay.
Anybody else? Again, thank you, Mr. Administrator for presentation. Thank you for everybody that worked on this because that's a lot more numbers than I like looking at and, well, in general. So I appreciate it. Before we entertain the last motion, I did want to address one other thing. Counselor Shaw had requested basically an executive session to discuss some issues with our attorney. And I did request that although I didn't know about the budget presentation at the time, so I pushed that off, but I just wanted to let him know that the plan is to have a special COW meeting next week to address that specifically.
Thank you.
And with that, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain one final motion.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.